To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley.
President.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
Okay, we have some introductions tonight. The first one is the introduction of the Community Development Director.
So, thank you, council. I'd like to introduce Sherri Meads. You see she's in there, she'll come to the podium in a minute. But Sherri comes to us from the city of Santa Rosa. She was a senior planner, and she started last Monday. And we've had quite a bit of time to be able to go through a number of the projects that the city has coming. But a little more, so Sherri worked for a number of years as a senior planner. Prior to her planning career, she worked as a nurse also in Sonoma County before she changed her careers. In her past planning work, she's worked on projects such as general plan updates, climate action plans, development review, public outreach, development of a short-term rental ordinance, hazard mitigation planning, departmental goal settings and priority, and California Environmental Quality Act review and evaluation. Sherri's already demonstrated her willingness to roll up her sleeves and worked on a number of complicated projects. We've introduced her to the mill site specific plan. She's getting integrated with some of the county staff on the climate action plan. And I think we got her plugged into the county planning effort for the hazard mitigation plan. So there's a number of things already. She's ready to roll up her sleeves and get to work. And then she's also really done a great job getting to meet our team in the building department and planning department, and demonstrated that she's willing to be a good team member and a leader for that department. So I'm really excited that Sherri's here. And with that, it should be on, Sherri.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Trent, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. I'm Sherri Meads, your new Community Development Director, and I'm just so excited to be here. We have a busy night, so I won't take your time, because hopefully this is the first of many times I'll be before you with something to say. But I just want to say I greatly appreciate this opportunity. I am so impressed with the city, with the leadership, with everything that's happening here, and just really happy to be part of this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Our next introduction is utility worker two.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, and everyone else here, to the big crowd tonight. Just want to introduce you, our newest member, Dan Daniel Rockhold. He is a new utility two in the water and sewer department. And he moved into Fortuna area about junior high, and he's grown up in the high schools and still around here. And he has a family. He got hired on after being employed as a temporary in the parks for about six months, and he threw the express employment. And so he was a temporary employee over there, had an opportunity to put his application in, and was able to come on as a full-time person. So I just want to introduce you to Daniel.
Thank you, guys. I'd like to appreciate the opportunity you guys gave me to work here, and I look forward to working many years here.
Thank you. Our last introduction is park maintenance worker two.
Thanks. I'd like to introduce John Paycheck. He is our new parks maintenance two worker. John has an extensive background in maintenance, and most recently at the city of Fortuna as a parks maintenance worker one, which is a part-time worker. And I will say that we had 28 applicants for the position, and a lot of them were extremely qualified, and John rose to the top of that. So I think it says a lot to John and his attitude and his work ethic to be able to fit in with our parks crew, which was one of the many hardest-working crews in the city. But those guys move at a pretty fast clip, and they have pretty high expectations for their folks. And so it says a lot that they chose John to be the next full-time parks maintenance worker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just want to take a moment to thank you for having me here this evening. Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to thank Jesse Towne and Bob for being so accommodating and welcoming, and I look forward to seeing you all in the community.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, next we have a Measure E Annual Report presented by Measure E Chair Su Long.
Thank you. So basically, Aaron did a wonderful job of putting together the report that's in your packet, so I could stand here and read that all to you word for word, but that'd be a waste of time. So just a few highlights for the public, who might be watching or listening, and the people who are here. Measure E is a 3/4% transaction tax that's added to sales tax here in Fortuna, and that passed in November of 2016. It was going to expire in March of 2025. So in order to be able to plan our budget more thoroughly and efficiently, we went back to the voters in 2020, and now Measure E will expire in 2033. So the purpose of Measure E was to provide public safety, programs for youth, programs for seniors, roads, streets, drainage. And I'm really proud that the city has kept to that specific use for the money. One of the things that's really helped us is that since it's a transaction tax, we get that 0.75% from online sales. So even though people are shopping more online, we are still able to get that money channeled into our Measure E funds so that we can do all of these projects. So just a few of the things that Measure E provides is it's about 1.3 million for 2022 to 2023, and we have several positions in the police department. A lot of our money goes to the police department, about 48% of Measure E funds. And so we have two detectives, a community service officer, one of the K-9s officers, and the other one is through donations, thanks to the hard work of our chief of police, Casey Day. We've used it for a match for grants for several projects in the city that wouldn't have been able to happen without it. Some of them were drainage. And if you'll notice, one of the drainage projects that we were able to do was the Rona Creek, is Rona Creek right behind Boulevard? And we've had all of this rain just inundated us the past few weeks, and the Boulevard has not flooded, so that is super cool. We've also used some of it for roads, for illegal camp cleanups, and the list goes on. So part of our illegal camp cleanups, we have a part-time code enforcement officer who's been able to work on some of the blighted lots and areas in the city, and that's funded with Measure E as well. Parks and Rec Director and Parks Supervisor, which we are bringing onboard very soon since both of those positions are vacant, funded by Measure E. So that goes back to our youth programs, our senior programs that happened through the parks. And we were able to do the basketball courts, the new basketball courts that are pretty amazing in Rona Park. We were able to acquire seven acres from the McLean Foundation that had already adjoined Newburgh Park, so we'll be able to expand our park facilities with somewhere soccer fields, parking, and whatever else we can come up with that we can afford. We were able to fund some of the soccer lights, and we were able to give money to the seniors for some of their programming. So a huge benefit to the city, and we've really been able to put the money to good use. So thank you, guys, for all of your hard work. Thank you, Aaron. Aaron's not here, is Aaron here? I thought it was not you. Thank you, Aaron, for all of your hard work, and I am happy to be part of the Measure E committee since I was way back in the beginning, part of getting the whole thing started. And we have a great committee, and I was glad to see that Martin is reapplying. So that will fill our committee, and we won't have any vacancies. So thank you for your time tonight, really, really appreciate it, and see you next time.
Thank you. We're happy to have you on that committee. You know a little bit about it. Our next discussion item is a presentation from Mark Thurmond. Did I say that right? On Measure A, and this is a yes on A, and in two weeks at our next city council meeting, we'll have the other side no on A. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for having me here. So I thought I'd just go over briefly what Measure A does and some things it doesn't do. So we're going to ask ourselves, when we get to the ballot, what is it? And what vision do we have for cannabis in the future? Do we prefer cannabis in the county for the next 10 to 20 years to expand, to get bigger? Do we want it to stay where it is? Do we want it to be regulated and enforced, those regulations? How much more cultivation should there be? How much more harm to watersheds, to rivers, and fish do we want to see? How much more harm to residents, neighbors, and communities should there be? So what will Measure A do? I'll go through some brief points, and then get into the mandate and so forth. The measure would stop between 2,000 and 2,500 additional permits. So the county's got 3,500 permits it wants to fill. We're probably maybe 1,200, 1,100 now. So it's due to triple, add another 2,000, 2,500. This measure would stop at about where it is, maybe a little less, around 1,000. It would allow additional, would not allow these additional footprints of cannabis grows on the watersheds. Therefore, there'd be no additional harm to fish, wildlife, in the streams. Except for the small farms, the measure would limit additional expansion of cultivation to the existing farm, so they wouldn't be able to go beyond their current area. Again, this would not allow the additional increase in footprint of these farms. No more multiple permits would be issued, which has been allowed in this, what they call permit stacking, allows industrial size or mega grows to come in and develop a lot of permits on one parcel. By stopping this, again, we're reducing future watershed impacts. Measure A would create a new land use section in the general plan. General plan is sort of the constitution for the county. The measure mandates that it can't be changed except by another vote of the people. So why is this mandate necessary? If we don't have the mandate, the people could vote and approve this measure, and then two weeks later, the Board of Supervisors could just negate it, vote it down, reverse the vote of the people. So that's why we have a mandate. It's really to protect the vote of the people. Some claim that the measure would be cast in stone, could never be changed. That's not true. We saw three weeks, three months or so ago, the board took four weeks to get an initiative ready to go on the ballot, to change its mind, but it only took four weeks, not 20 years, as some people claim. So getting a vote of the people through the Board of Supervisors is not an onerous task. In addition, the measure has directions to the county to develop a number of ordinances and guidelines that give the county a tremendous amount of flexibility in definitions, implementing language, and so forth, that gives them leeways to sort of craft the measure in language that works for them, under their circumstances, still maintaining the direction that the mandate gives for its general purpose. So what's new in the initiative? First of all, there would be the new requirements would be placed on the county. The county must approve, improve the enforcement of regulations by undertaking at least one annual onsite in-person inspection with up to 24 hours' notice. So this is a slight change in the current regulations. There's no more grower self-assessment, or satellite-only inspections, or inspections with several days or weeks of advanced notice. The county also must expand and improve its public process, giving more voice to the people, and allowing neighborhoods to have a say. So the county must investigate all resident complaints, must hold public hearings, bring the applications before the public, no longer outside public view in some ministerial process. The county must notify residents and neighbors, permit applications in their neighborhoods. So why did we pursue the initiative process? I think this is a fair question. In our investigations, following a lot of incidents that we witnessed ourselves in our own neighborhoods, we found case after case of problems involving pollution, nightlight pollution, toxic algae, illegal water diversions, toxic water dumped into a stream that actually serves a public swimming pool. We see some of these in the press today. There was Mad River Grow that was fined for a large sediment pollution. The Southern Humboldt fellow was fined $1.7 million just a couple of weeks ago, and of course, the table bluff incident where there was illegal growing and human trafficking. So we still have these problems going on. We wanted the county to fix these problems, but in the public process that was in place just was so broken, we couldn't get attention, we couldn't get a foot in the door. We were told by officials, and I quote this, "There's no appetite for cannabis reform." Public input as far back as 2017 also has been ignored. In that time, there was a DEIR and FEIR, the environmental impact reports. A lot of people put in comments, a lot of environmental groups, a lot of the agencies, water boards, and fishing game, for really good ideas, maximizing the number of permits to 1,000, which is what the measure would do, reducing, keeping the size to 10,000 square feet or less, requiring carrying capacity study before we put a cap estimate out, requiring other kinds of studies, looking at the aquifers to see, do we really have the water for this? And examining what other kinds of monitoring systems we needed to have to check whether the rivers and streams were actually becoming polluted. So these didn't make it into the ordinance, and these are really good ideas. So we had took a look at those, we ran it by a lot of people, talked to an awful lot of individuals in the various agencies, talked to biologists, a lot of just people off the street. A lot of neighbors and neighborhoods we found live in fear of, and don't want to talk about it. They're afraid that the word will get out, and there'll be retribution. Not all growers are like this, certainly, there's some very good growers, but this happens enough to warrant keeping quiet. So we even found this in getting signatures, including in Fortuna, where we had people say, "Well, I'd be glad to sign this, but we're going to have to do it over there behind the car, or I'll have to meet you someplace else. I don't want anybody to see me sign this." So we have people, for various reasons, are quietly fearful, and we've had people who won't show up to meetings like this to advocate for Measure A, because they don't want people to know who they are. So, and I won't get into that much more, but the point is that we pursued the initiative process. And in 1911, California was the first state to take on the initiative process, and has developed it quite extensively, and it's created just for these circumstances, where the normal political process does not allow a voice of reasonable people to be heard. In a recent decision against the growers lawsuit that would have deprived the citizens of the right to vote for Measure A, Judge Canning said, "The initiative is one of the most precious rights of our democratic process." So that's why we did this. It's also a First Amendment right to remind people about the right to redress grievances. And I'd like to address a couple of false narratives that we keep hearing about, and set the record on that. Measure A does not restrict all new structures on all farms, as some people claim. It's an incorrect interpretation of this clause defining expanded. So expanded, and I mentioned that we could have expanded areas in farms, less than 10,000 square feet, but above 10,000 square feet, expanded cultivation would not be allowed in Measure A. So cultivation area, cultivation intensity, and the usage of power and water resources. So the definition is, "It shall mean," this is a quote, "shall mean an increase in the size, intensity, or resource usage of commercial cannabis cultivation activities." It's clear and unambiguous, this doesn't apply to bathrooms, or garages, or other structures not associated with an increase in cultivation area, intensity, or resource usage. No. Part of the problem that people have is what constitutes definition of a structure. So to figure that out, the county will have to define what it means by structure, after Measure A is approved, if it's approved. So Measure A has authority, so to speak, over the ordinance language, and the county would then come in and work on the language to clarify any issues like this. Nevertheless, there are clarifications sometimes is needed, and that's why the measure specifically authorizes and directs the county to put that kind of clarifying language in there. We also hear opponents say that Measure A would restrict environmental improvements like solar panels and water tanks. Well, first, Measure A actually requires water tanks and ponds if you don't have enough water, so it's just the opposite. And it further mandates that the county has to interpret the implementation of the measure so as to promote the environment. If it interprets it in a way otherwise, it would be in violation of the measure. So if the county actually did forbid somebody from putting in solar panels, which would be an advance step towards improving the environment, it would be in violation of the And then finally, I want to address this analysis that the county put forward, and you have a copy in your packet, I believe, of our response to the county. This was an analysis the county put out after Measure A was received enough votes and was approved for ballot. The county report claims, in a number of ways, that Measure A would be bad for the county. And it is not accurate. It uses misinformation, it makes false assumptions, it does things like, it says there's no, tourist permits are not allowed, there would have to be a hearing to get renewals. None of that is in the initiative, none of that is even implied in the initiative. So there's a number of false claims in there that really negate its value in any way, in my opinion, and in other opinion, that it should be used in any way to assess the value or the worth of the measure. Please take time to read it. So in conclusion, I guess to reiterate, we have to ask ourselves, what do we prefer for cannabis in the next 10 or 20 years? Do we need a further threefold expansion with limited enforcement and limited public voice, or do we need something like Measure A? Thank you for your attention. Any questions? Do I take questions? I don't know.
Any questions from council?
Just a clarification.
Sure.
Mark, at the beginning, you mentioned that the measure would limit those people currently with permits. Even if it was under 1,000 square feet?
No. They would be able to expand up to 10,000 square feet in their area.
Up to 10,000?
Up to 10,000.
So if a person has a 5,000 square foot grow permitted, they would be able to add another 5,000?
They could apply for that, they'd go through a process, but yes, it allows expansion in area up to 10,000 total square feet.
Okay. And I'm told that there are up to 1,000 permitted grows right now in Humboldt County, which, and about the equal number of unpermitted illegal grows. Measure A doesn't affect those illegal grows, of course. We're just talking regulation. So with Measure A, a single person currently can have multiple permits?
If they have multiple permits now, they keep them. Any permit they have now is their property, and this measure protects vested interest and property rights. So anything you have now that's been approved, you keep.
And that includes grows over 10,000 square feet?
Yes.
And they're grandfathered in?
They're grandfathered in. The county has an ordinance that refers to this as legally non-conforming use. So the use would be cultivation, and the restriction on non-conforming uses is that they cannot be expanded or altered. So that's a county ordinance. Now, there's nothing to say the county couldn't come back and revisit that ordinance if they thought that some additional language would help improve the clarification of that, for some reason, but yes.
Okay, you also mentioned interpretation from the county with regard to the environment, which is interesting to me. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so the measure mandates that the county take a broad view in its interpretation of the measure, and a broad understanding and view of its purpose, making sure that whatever the county does interpret and implement is aligned with its purpose. And the purpose is specifically to protect the environment and the people against harm from cannabis cultivation. So if, for example, a solar panel, if you were to restrict solar panels, that would not be a pro-environmental restriction, a pro-environmental support, so to speak, and the county would not be allowed to do that in its mandate.
And that's spelled out in?
That's spelled out specifically, Section 9, that that's what they, that's what, so the measure actually describes what it's going to do, and it says, okay, now, it tells the county, now here's what we want you, how we want you to interpret this. Here's the broad scope. Here's what you can't do. So there's specific language that says you cannot make policy, or ordinances, or even take actions that would be contrary to the purpose or the language of the measure, and that you are authorized and directed whenever you have to, to make, implementing ordinances and policy and plans as necessary to facilitate this transition, and to get the language lined up as necessary to implement the measure.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one more thing to add to this. It seems to me as if in the past, all of the pollution, all the bad stuff that is happening with the farms are illegal farms. The permitted farms aren't getting that kind of stuff. So are you saying that the water board, the fishing game, and the sheriff's department aren't doing their jobs on keeping the permitted ones legal and clean?
Well, first, you make an interesting point. I think we would like to believe that, and I suspect you're correct, that the illegal grows, which haven't undergone oversight for regulations and inspections, have cleaned up quite a bit. But we just saw in the news, you know, evidence that this isn't the case. We've had $1.7 million fine down in Southern Humboldt from someone, you know, that got caught by the fishing game, another one out in Mad River a couple of months ago. And I've had personal experience with permitted grows near me, major water pollution. The problem we have, and I'm going to go back to the final environmental impact report, which is required by SEQA in order to set up this whole cannabis so-called project, which is to legalize cannabis and to get the ordinance going. In that FEIR, you have to come up with ways to mitigate these potential impacts, and one impact, of course, is pollution, from, it could be fertilizers, chemicals, illegal pesticides, it could be a number of things. And so the mitigation that was put forward in the FEIR that was supposed to happen was a routine monitoring and testing of the waters, particularly some monitored streams. Well, that never took place. So we really don't know the extent to which our water is polluted, or where it's coming from. And I will suspect that, you know, if And I will suspect that, you know, if you've got a stream that's got all permitted grows and another stream that's got only illegal grows, the pollution is likely to be worse than the other. But we don't really know. And why, so why haven't we had those monitored? Well, I asked a number of people in the Water Board, a number of people at Fishing Game, who are responsible and state agencies and are qualified and prepared to do that. And their answer was almost to the word consistently the same. And they said, well, we were never asked. And I said, well, what do you mean you weren't asked? They said, well, they can't do it until the lead agency asks. The lead agency is the county. And so one of the provisions we have in the measure, as maybe silly as it might seem, is that, you know, we say the county must collaborate and cooperate with these other agencies. But the other aspect of the pollution part is that we do have regulations where they're not supposed to pollute. There's supposed to, there's supposed to be practices undertaken where that prevents that. But how do we know if the regulations are being followed? I mean, just because we have regulations doesn't mean it's going to work. And so we need to have inspections, and we need to have effective inspections. I used to work a lot in the dairy industry, and not as a dairyman, but as a veterinarian. And I can tell you, I could be there at any hour of the day or night, and it wasn't unusual to have an inspector just show up unannounced. So they would inspect the daylights out of these dairies. They'd take samples. They'd look for labor problems. They'd look for animal welfare problems. They'd, you know, any number of things. A veterinarian can drive by and just look out and take what they see. If it looks like a problem, they can report it. A citizen can do the same. So the problem that we have, and one of the things we're trying to fix here, is that as regulated as the industry may think it is, we don't know that the regulations are being followed. If you go out and you give them notice, and I think most people are absolutely honest and forthright, and they want to do the right thing. But other people are going to take that week's notice, and they're going to cover up the straws they've got in the stream. They're going to, you know, remove the chemicals or fertilizer sacks that they don't have stored properly that are leaking and so forth. So to me, it'd be like, you know, we have regulations on driving, but if we said, well, we're not going to check your speed limit except, you know, next Tuesday from 2:00 to 3:00 when we come out and check, well, how would that affect, you know, our driving habits and the safety? So I, and we're not asking for more than one inspection. Well, we're asking for at least one inspection per year, but it'd be onsite, in person. So it's not a self-assessment, which has been allowed in the past. It's not just a satellite flyover, which can add information, but it can't tell you what's happening, you know, specifically on the ground very much. And we ask that it be done so that people can't fudge, so to speak. So I think that's, you know, one of the reasons, we don't really know how much pollution we have. And the pollution that we probably do have, I think we have to be fair and look at all sources. I mean, it could be from someone's backed-up sewer system, their residential area. It could be a number of things. But we're seeing increased algae blooms. We're seeing a change in the toxin in these algae. The Fish and Wildlife biologists are really concerned about this. The Matto River, despite its increased flow last year and lower water temperatures, had a terrible algae bloom, and it was a different toxin on hold. So those are some of the things that we face. And some of these chemicals and fertilizers may take decades to make their way through the soil and into either an aquifer or a stream. Some of this, it doesn't necessarily happen overnight. I'm not a soil biologist, but this is, you know, what I'm learning from talking with these kinds of specialists.
Okay. I'll tell you a couple of my concerns. This document is 35 pages. Is that correct?
The document is, the provisions are about nine pages. And there's about five pages of Resolution 1843, which is a repaired to appendix. And then there's, the rest of the pages are land, land use plans, coastal plans, and ordinance language that's put in there to show where one or two words have been amended. So the crux of it is in the provisions. It's about nine pages.
Okay. And then this is probably one of my biggest concerns, because this is going to make things a lot more difficult for the county, for the growers, for everybody. The legal growers, the problem is not there. The problem is with the illegal growers, and this does not address any legal growers.
That's correct. It doesn't. And the?
You're going to force more legal growers to go the other way.
Well, I, I'm not convinced of that, first of all. If they can't follow the regulations now, which basically is what we just put into the general plan and increase the enforcement. So if they are forced out, then it says that they can't follow the regulations. The other thing is, we could not address illegal because we're not authorized to tell the sheriff how to enforce the law. That's, the state constitution directs the sheriff to do that. So that, there's legal issues there that we couldn't get into. So that's, you're right. It doesn't address it, and so, and we didn't try to address it for that legal reason. I don't personally believe that there should be a big movement into the illegal area. If that's, if that happens, I guess we know the location, and the sheriff should be able to deal with that.
I might have more questions later. But we're going to open this to public comment. And people from the audience who want to make a comment, please state your name, and you have three minutes per comment. Let's see. Okay, go ahead.
Well, good evening, council members. My name is Ross Gordon. I'm the Policy Director with Humboldt County Growers Alliance, where the trade association represents permitted legal cannabis operators here in the county. Want to appreciate having this discussion today. Also appreciate you giving us a chance to present two weeks from now in a more comprehensive way. But just wanted to take a few minutes, given the ballots are being mailed out today, and early voting is going to start tomorrow, to maybe address a few of the points that were made by Dr. Thurmond. This is not, from our perspective, an initiative that's primarily about the number of permits or the size of permits in the county. If that were the goal of the initiative, this could be a very simple one-page initiative. In fact, Mayor Trent, as you mentioned, this is a 38-page initiative. It is incredibly detailed. It's incredibly dense. And it basically rewrites all of our cannabis ordinances and does so without public input. So this document was never made available for public review by environmental groups, by law enforcement, by county or state regulators before it was sent to the Office of Elections in Final Form. That was on March 5, 2022. And since that time, there's been enormous issues and errors identified in this document. And about two years later, we're having exactly the same conversation. It hasn't evolved, because it can evolve. It was submitted in its final form at that point, and then we all got to look at it and see what all the issues were. And so we've seen a huge diverse coalition come out against Measure A since that time. So the sheriff has opposed Measure A. Humboldt Deputy Sheriff's Organization, Arcade and Eureka City Councils, supervisors Bushnell, Bone, and Wilson all oppose the initiative. Many, if not all, of the candidates who are running for supervisor as well are opposed to this initiative. So it's really across the board. And the reason is, I think, you mentioned, Mayor Trent, is that this is an initiative that's really going after one sector for a very unclear reason, which is our legal cannabis farmers, who are already incredibly regulated by the county, by Department of Fish and Wildlife, by the Water Board, by Department of Pesticide Regulation, Department of Cannabis Control, receive inspections from all of these agencies. And the average time to receive a permit for cannabis cultivation in Humboldt County is 28 months, which I think is indicative of the amount of hoops that folks have to jump through and the amount of scrutiny that's on these permits. Every single little aspect of what happens on a cannabis farm has to be approved. It has to be in writing, and it's then inspected by multiple different agencies. The real crux of this initiative is in the definition of expansion. So expansion is defined in this initiative so broadly that includes any increase in water usage, energy usage, or the number or size of any structure used in connection with cultivation. So this is where you hear these concerns about water tanks and solar, but it's also very normal agricultural stuff. It's things like drying sheds. It's things like a barn. It's things like if you want infrastructure to bring tourism on farm. All of these are structures which are heavily restricted under the initiative. And I'll just close and say, I think this is about something larger than just cannabis. This is about setting a precedent where if you don't like some specific land use in your neighborhood or whatever, you can write an initiative to specifically single out that land use without data, without evidence, without, for example, environmental groups or agencies or whoever else on your side.
Go ahead and close.
And specifically restrict that land use, and I don't think we want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please hold the applause?
Hello, council. Thank you for listening. My name is Dylan Mattole. I'm a farmer from Honeydew. I'm second generation, born and raised here in Humboldt County. Do the majority of my shopping here in Fortuna. I also am the president of the Humboldt County Growers Alliance and the Los Coats Farmers Guild. Incredibly frustrating, of course, to sit here and listen to the proponents of Measure A talk about inspections and these sort of things as if they have any inkling of an understanding of what actually is involved in the system. They speak as if the Humboldt County ordinance that permits our land use to get a state cultivation license is the all-encompassing body of permitting that we work under. We are inspected. We do have 24-hour notice inspections or immediate inspections with no notice by the Department of Cannabis Control. We're also inspected by the Ag Department. As a farmer who's been in this process since the very beginning, I've been inspected no fewer than twice every single year. I am a small farm, outdoor only, in Honeydew. I'm not a mega grow. When they do talk about inspections, it's interesting that they bring up some of these recent cases. These are inspections that resulted in extreme enforcement. The one in Southern Humboldt was a multiple-year-long inspection by multiple agencies, and they levied a $1.7 million fine on that landowner. The bust in Lolita, another example of the sheriff doing an investigation, probably based on neighborhood complaints initially, that led to arrests and the shutting down of that row. So these, we do not, we are not in a system that lacks inspections. As far as water pollution and these things they talked about, we are not legally allowed to use any form of unregistered pesticides or fertilizers. We are the most regulated agricultural crop in the state of California with the highest rigor testing of any product in the state. So when he mentions dairy farms, all of that, that's great. Every gram of product that we produce goes through state mandated testing and is destroyed if it were to have any evidence of any pesticide, which would then, in fact, trigger an inspection of our site most likely. So, you know, there's multiple redundancies. We are regulated for water use and reporting. I don't know what they're talking about, about non-monitoring. Every drop in and out in our water systems is recorded, regulated and recorded. Just this week, our annual water reports are due. We operate under a special state water order for cannabis. 38, I could see the confusion as you listen to this presentation by proponents on this. It's incredibly confusing. And that's why the county went through and wrote a 27-page analysis of every bit. They are the agency that would be implementing this land use. And so when they?
Can you close?
Yes. In closing, I'll just say, the sheriff is against this. Our county is against this. There is nobody, no environmental, I was on the board of the Salmon Group, that is involved in water monitoring. Tasha McKee, who's been working for years in water perseverance, is opposed to this.
Thank you.
They have nobody on their side. Thank you.
I hate to cut people short, but we only have three minutes for each person. So I'm going to go like this when you're down to 10 seconds.
The microphone wasn't being picked up by access umbol, so she's getting some batteries in there.
It's important that you talk into the microphone, because people in TV land can't hear you unless you do.
You want them to hear.
And you want them to hear.
Should be good.
Thank you. Sweet. All right. Good evening, city council and Mayor Trent. I'm Indy Riggs, a local business owner and a Fortuna High School graduate, class of 2000. One of the businesses I currently operate is on my farm, which is located down in Stafford. It's a small 3,000-square-foot cannabis garden, which, by the way, is inspected annually by the county planning department and by the Department of Cannabis Control. Going to high school at Fortuna High, I never quite imagined I'd be where I am today, albeit I'm very grateful and blessed. I imagined as a student, I'd continue to college, pursue a career in forestry, a subject that I grew a passion for under the tutelage of Mr. Myers, a longtime Ag teacher at Fortuna High. Many of my peers also considered this career, and many also knew we always had the mills to fall back on in the event college didn't work out. We all know what happened to our mills with new regulations, a tough economy, and bankruptcies closing them down or shrinking them to a shadow of what they were. The loss of industry is familiar to Humboldt, and the latest, no matter how we may feel about it, is cannabis. The raising of a crop has never been easy, yet it is a renewable and it is a sustainable endeavor. The money that used to flow in from cannabis spread throughout our communities to businesses such as car dealerships, restaurants, realty companies, and much more. Although the cannabis industry is also now a shadow of what it once was, it still brings money and opportunity to our area. Measure A threatens to take that away in any future hope of establishing a stable and sustainable industry in Humboldt County. Perhaps what scares me the most is the precedent this will set. With the 13 pages of the general plan, this measure will amend. And if you'd like to take the word of the proponents themselves, the idea that next other farms and agriculture enterprises such as dairies and ranches could be targeted. Let me quote Mr. Thurmond from last Thursday's debate at Humboldt Cal Poly. "There is a strong desire among many factions to rethink everything regarding regulation and enforcement and environment with respect to cannabis and with respect to other areas of agriculture that could be doing the same sort of things that some of us are concerned about with cannabis. And so when the EIR says that water quality and water flow is going to be monitored routinely, we want to see that. We want to see if the water is in fact clean. And if it isn't, where is it not clean? Is it from a dairy? That sounds to me like Measure A's Pandora's Box, except, one, once that box is open, there's no closing it. Excuse me. Yes, Humboldt County produces some of the finest cannabis, but it also produces some of the finest dairy products and beef. If any of you follow what's occurring in Europe with their farmers right now, you'd see where this may all be going, and we can't let it go there. And that's why the Humboldt County GOP party, the Democrats, and our very own sheriff all agree, we must stop Measure A for the good of all, not just a few retirees and their San Francisco law firm who drafted it." Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry to have to cut you off, but I do have to keep to three minutes.
Mayor Trent, council, good evening. My name is Walt Wilson. My wife and I have been trying to figure out how to vote on Measure A. And I noticed that our sheriff is against Measure A. I was going to ask Mr. Thurmond how he can explain the fact that the sheriff himself is against this measure. Having heard all of this tonight, I have no idea what this measure's all about. It looks like a bunch of gobbledygook, frankly. And I'm afraid we have to vote against it simply because we can't understand it. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Craig Johnson. My wife and I own a farm in Southern Humboldt, but what is known as a farm My wife and I own a farm in Southern Humboldt, but what is known as a farm to us is known as our homestead and where we raise our children and grow our food and also grow a crop that we do for market as well, like some of these other farmers. I think it's important to realize that the proponents might have had the best intentions coming forward, and this might have been a little more real if this was 10 years ago, 15 years ago. But where we are today, we've gone through legalization, eight years of public meetings, eight years of open comments from anyone that wanted to bring them, for or against. The proponents talked about four months in the streets. We've been at it eight years. This is our life, this is our job we're fighting for. I want to show you a map. This is a map from the proponents' website, and it shows the concentration of cannabis farms. I don't know what date this is made from, maybe they could help us with that after the meeting, but currently, if we look at this, it shows-
Green dots indicating grows in different water sheds?
They can't hear you.
I'll bring them up to speed. You can see the green dots?
Each of these green dots represent farms from maybe five, six years ago. I'm not sure when they put this on their website. But we can look down at the legend, and the legend says it all. One green dot is about a mile and a half, okay? So let's realize that. All these dots are farms. Today, with the farms that are left, we have a total of .25. Oh, sorry. Thanks, honey. .52 square miles of farms left. That's a half of a square mile. So you could take one of these green dots, cut it in half, and that's all of a sudden are left. It's been a mass extinction event. I mean, there's no one left. So to bring Measure A forward at this time and space, it's just kind of Johnny come lately when it comes to policy. It's really not what Humboldt County is looking for. As the sheriff has spoken, as many environmental groups have spoken, this is really not good policy to move forward, and it's really going to affect the main streets even more. Southern Humboldt, we have 20 open storefronts, and Fortuna, I'm seeing some of the same. And this is our main street as well. I just bought a stove from the appliance store down the street. We shop for tires here, we come to the dentist here, we do a lot of our work here. So I appreciate you, and I appreciate this community as our community, and I would appreciate a no on Measure A. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Erickson. I am owner of Full Moon Farms. We are an environmentally friendly farm out in Highway 36. We use rain catchment water for all of our irrigation needs. We are on solar, and my family's been in this area since the early 1900s. I'm on the policy committee with the HCGA as well as the board of directors of my local volunteer fire department out in Dinsmore. Our farm hosts multiple fundraisers each year in support of our community, our community's centers, volunteer fire departments, and environmental causes around the county, not just Highway 36 or Fortuna area. For example, our farm, along with other farms, raised money to purchase multiple acres of land that was donated back to the Sanctuary Forest Project, helping to preserve the headwaters of the Matoll watershed. I'm here today to urge you not to support Measure A. There is a reason so many businesses, organizations, and individuals are against Measure A. From the sheriff's department, various chambers of commerce, city councils, local tribes, small businesses, ranchers, loggers, environmentalists, politicians, lawyers, and a rare unifying of every political party in the county opposes Measure A overwhelmingly. This is for a reason. They can see through the personal bias. They can see through the hollow claims that are not backed by any facts or science. They know if Measure A passes, it would undo and undermine years of collaboration work building and implementing the most stringent regulations of any agriculture industry in the state. If Measure A passes, it would be a direct hit to our economy, to our tax base, and would set a dangerous precedent for future land use and property rights. Any landowner should be alarmed at what Measure A represents. If Measure A passes, it would shutter the doors of small farms like mine, the type of farms that care deeply about the land that we operate on, about our community. We are here trying to dig through for a brighter future for Humboldt County. Nobody's in this for the money anymore. This is passion. This is family. This is because it's what we do. Measure A directly attacks the good players, the small farms like us, and does nothing to upset the illicit market. I just ask you today to stand with your community, with your county, and formally oppose Measure A. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Polly Kinsinger, and I am a resident of Fortuna and a permitted cannabis cultivator. My 4,600-square-foot farm is out 36 on Buck Mountain on an 80-acre parcel that has been in my family for 111 years. I'm here to ask you to support the No on Measure A campaign. In the past 11 years since we began cultivating our land, we have cleaned up truckloads of debris from previous trespass grows. We've used our proceeds to buy a couple of adjacent parcels that had been abandoned, and we brought those parcels back to their pre-cultivation glory. We've built ourselves a mountain home where we grow, share, and store our own food, and cannabis makes it possible for us to sustain ourselves there. We have a cannabis ordinance that works in our county. Through the public process, amendments can be made to the ordinance that reflect the current state of cannabis in our county now and into the future. Adding new regulations to an already rigid, regulated industry will not solve the problems that the proponents set out to solve. In fact, as Sheriff Hansel mentioned in his recorded support of No on Measure A campaign, more regulation may have the opposite effect of pushing operators back into the shadows where regulation is less effective. When this measure was originally put together, there was a lot more cannabis in Humboldt County. The current state of the cannabis market in California has already pushed so many cultivators out. The so-called green rush is over. Help those of us who are left continue to live here, raise our children here, pay our taxes and our mortgages, shop at Strel's, Scotty's, Wycoff's, and Forbusco, and continue to provide environmental stewardship to our properties and to those of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nadalyn DeLapp. I'm the executive director of the Humboldt County Growers Alliance, and I just really want to say thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for listening to our farmers' stories. Your time is valuable, and I know that we are scheduled to come back in two weeks, but you've heard from us, and you've heard, I would say, probably a pretty good amount. And so if you guys want to skip that presentation in two weeks and make a motion to oppose Measure A, we would be okay with that if you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Cody King. I was born here in Fortuna, like a lot of these people. I went to high school here, and 2016 kind of was a turning point for me because it gave me an opportunity to come out of the shadows and to kind of make a career out of what we've already been doing for our whole lives. And I'm coming here at a different aspect than a lot of these guys. I guess we would be what you consider like a mega grow. I have multiple farms in Honeydew. We own and operate a lot of them. It's about over 10 acres of canopy out there right now on the Matoll River. And after listening to this fellow speak, I tried to not let my motion set in, but just some of the things he was saying is a lie. The environmental impacts is a big point for us. It's February 5 today. We have a, and just, he kept bringing up the water sheds, and that's something that was irritating me because we have over 8 million gallons of rain catchment water tanks, ponds, and water tanks set throughout Honeydew, all down on the Matoll River, close to it. And as of February 2nd, every single rain catchment storage you had was overflowing. And even in the biggest drought, I think it was 2019 or 2018, we never even got down to 30% containment or 30% to our fill line. And all the talk about water pollution, when you're growing in a pot and you're feeding in six inches of dirt, that water is digested and evaporated in that plant in a matter of two days. None of our spill or runoff touches the ground. It stays within a pot, or it stays within a weed containment mat, which we have, all of our beds built in. And so a lot of those things, the light pollution is complete BS. I mean, since 2019, there's been a law that we have to have those covered, so everyone's had those covered. And as someone that has been in the gray area and came out of the illegal world of this, I guarantee you, everyone I know and everyone that I work with will not adhere to this, and all it's going to do is make more illegal grows. And in illegal grow, we don't have to have those regulations, you know? And so you're going to have people that don't have the mindset we do and that have been working for eight years to do everything correctly and to build a brand and build demand for our product, you know what I mean? And that's the second thing, is not only are we doing it environmentally conscious, one, I was born in Fortuna and I've lived in Honeydew. My dad's buried in Honeydew. Our family's been there forever. So not only are we taking care of the land, but our five-year plan isn't dictated by a 10,000-square-foot cap. We're in 11 dispensaries in Humboldt County from Riodell to Arcata, and that's growing. And we're growing from the Bay Area, we're getting into stores in LA, Santa Rosa, we just did a big drop in Merced. So we're growing our footprint, and just like any business wants to do, you're progressing and our demand is expanding. And so a 10,000-square-foot canopy, it's not fair for us that have worked eight years to build a brand and to have a demand for our product and to get shelf space. And it's been an uphill battle this entire time. And so all I ask is you guys would vote no and listen to the future of your community and not the setting suns that are retired and have personal vendettas. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Gina McLendon. I am a Fortuna resident, business owner, also a graduate of Fortuna High. I feel like it's kind of a class reunion tonight. I just wanted to take the time to thank all of these legal business owners for coming today and sharing their stories. I appreciate that. I also would like to thank you folks for being brave enough to come and tell your story. I think that both groups deserve recognition. Measure A aims to address the complex issues of the coexistence between legal cannabis farmers and the citizens who share neighborhoods and the communities with them. While I recognize there are still issues that need to be addressed, it is my belief that Measure A is not the right solution. Recognizing the dynamic nature of our communities and the challenges they face, it is imperative that our ordinances are flexible and easily adaptable. A rigid regulatory framework hinders our future ability to respond to this evolving industry effectively. Governing through convoluted and lengthy ballot initiatives is never an optimal approach to solving local issues. Acknowledging that there is still work to be done to fine-tune our cannabis ordinance not only to best serve the residents, but also our legal business owners. I urge you to consider the implications of this measure. It is necessary to vote against Measure A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole Gennaro. I'm a Heidsville resident, and I've been a business owner in Fortuna for over 20 years, Ant Heidsville, I guess, Neo River Valley. And I just, coming at this as not a cannabis grower, but in my consulting business, I do with various businesses, including cannabis, I think one of the most important things tonight to think about is the impacts that we have in our economy. Having those businesses that I've had, I've watched that money drop. To take money away from the one industry that we have in Humboldt County right now, I think would do a huge disservice to our county, and I just want that to be something that's thought of. Thank you.
Thank you. Sienna, do we have somebody online that wants to?
Yes, we have one. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, there. My name is Matthew, and my family and I own a small farm in Southern Humboldt County. And there's a few things I want to tell you guys today. This has been really frustrating for me to hear the proponents of this measure dispute and argue with the facts that are being presented. John Ford in the planning department came out with a staff report on how the county interprets this and how they will enforce it, and the proponents have disputed that. But the proponents aren't the ones that sign my permit. No, that's John Ford, so I have to listen to him when I have to choose who to listen to. And the same with the sheriff. You know, the sheriff is against this, and I support our law enforcement. And I know we're speaking to the city of Fortuna today, and in the past, Fortuna has decided that they don't really want cannabis in their community, which I might not agree with, but I fully support your decision as a community to do so because we are Americans and we have rights and we have a democratic process. So if a community decides in an overwhelming majority what they feel is good for their community, I support that 100%. But what I cannot support is what's going on tonight, and that's the proponents trying to manipulate all of you people today to, and use you as a means to achieve their goals. And that is just not right. And I find it quite insulting when they insinuate that we're trying to thumb our nose at the rules and regulations. I have seven years in a row of clean-tested products without pesticides. I'm inspected twice a year by Fish and Wildlife and the county and the state. I recently paid $11,000 or more in red tape to replace a culvert under my driveway that doesn't even, I don't even use the water for cannabis. We're 100% rainwater catchment. And I have to record my domestic well and report that annually to the water board as well. And as Mr. Thurmond said, he's not a soil biologist. He specializes in cattle and studies cows. And in 2022, Humboldt County sold more than 33,000 cattle, and using an average of 20 gallons per cow per day, that's over 240 million gallons of water that cattle consume. And I'm not saying we should go after the cattle industry, but I'm just using that as a point to illustrate that they are specifically targeting cannabis. And I also find it very disingenuous for them to say that they support small farms, and then a few sentences later, compare us to leprosy. It's just very, very difficult to listen to the proponents speak about this and dispute facts at every turn. My property is free of garbage, and you would be hard-pressed to find any speck of plastic if you walked around. And we enjoy living in the woods like all these other people who spoke and tonight. We're out there because being in the mountains is our passion, and I thank you all for being here, and vote no, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. Humboldt County Second District Supervisor Michelle Buschnell, and I appreciate the presentation from Mark and Betsy, and also the speakers for public comment. I was on an ad hoc with Natalie Arroyo, and we met with Mark and Betsy quite a few times and tried to work through Measure A components and answer questions and tried to, with Director Ford was also there, tried to really address the issues. And it was, we got a lot of conversation, we had a lot of conversation and heard a lot of concerns, but in the end, we weren't able to come to a resolution that they felt was satisfactory. Cultivation is a really hard business to get permitted in, and it has four agencies that constantly inspect you, you have to report to. I would urge you to talk to those agencies. Not one of them are here tonight to speak, to say that they're for this. Would also urge you to go to a cultivation site and look at it. I'm fearful that Measure A will allow for illegal cultivation to happen and flourish again, that people will go that way because it's just so difficult to permit. It's difficult now with the process. The inspections that they refer to, those are done every year. Also, you heard them talk about four sites that got busted last year. Why did they get busted? Because the process worked. That's really important to note. What I really urge you as council members to do is to do your investigation, to call the planning department, to call- to call the planning department, to call the state, to call Fish and Wildlife, to call water quality. Really, really do that and, and question the, the Measure A. It's really important that everyone does their homework. And like Walt said, he can't understand it. It's, it's pretty easy if you want to reduce to 10,000 square feet and you want to do, have no other growth. It's not 38 pages. It's probably two. So appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
I'm not a cultivator. Good evening. How are you guys doing? Not a cultivator. I don't smoke it. I don't need anything to enhance my appetite. I think what scared me the most tonight, and I wasn't going to talk, but what was said Thursday night and what was said tonight was the subliminal message you got that we'll be able to take this 38 pages and make sure that timber, other agriculture, dairy keeps coming up. Dairy keeps coming up because I've been on a lot of dairies. I've been on a lot of dairies too. I got 50-some odd of them in my district. I'm with them quite a bit. And with that being said, the subliminal part that has finally come out is this is so encompassing. And the reason it's 38 pages is because they're going, this isn't where they're going to stop. This is not where they're going to stop. Now, if it was simple, if it was easy, if it just went after 10,000 square foot of cannabis, it sounds like that's what they want, but why does that take 38 pages? And it just scares me and I'm going to refer to Walt too. I can't understand the thing. And that should scare a lot of people. But what I'm saying is, is this is going to go after so many other aspects of what we do. And I, it's not the only industry. People keep saying that. There has been $85 million spent on logging and mill infrastructure in Humboldt County in the last five and a half years. That's a lot of money. Do we have as many mills? No, but they're spending some money at it. We're getting good fishing. We're getting good crabbing season this year and it goes, it's not the only industries, but that doesn't mean we can toss another one out. We, and as, as Supervisor Bushnell said, the system worked. We get the bad guys, but this is going to drive a lot of people back the other way. And I don't know if you guys have read, our budget is not going to allow us to put other enforcement in our ag, in our sheriffs to go after. I, I don't think, I think people want us going after criminals that are, that are doing bump in the night. I mean, we have, you know, we've got an environmental district and everything else, and that's high on our list. But as of now, you have to show your water, you have enough water storage. We're pushing, you know, we've pushed, a, a lot of the things they're asking for, it sounds great, but it's already being taken care of. We've already heard that our sheriff is not doing his job or they don't feel, or, you know, but if this is the case, why is it, I mean, 28 months to get a permit? But why is our Humboldt Planning and Building Department against this? Why is our sheriffs? And for God's sakes, whoever thought we'd have the Greens, the Republicans and the Democrats agree on anything? So I'm, I'm just saying, it, it really scares me. I'm not saying this is a bad thing, but they didn't want to change anything once they got it written because they thought they had it. And if you don't think it was misrepresented, I got misrepresented one day by some people that didn't recognize me and they were talking about how many grows we were going to have. So it's, it's built on a, on a hill of sand and I don't want to be on top of that one. Thanks, you guys. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I'd like to address what the Measure A really is. It protects the vested rights of the farmers that we have now. Okay? Does that. It's 38 pages because our nine or 10 pages had to be attached to the existing ordinance. The existing ordinance is the basis of Measure A. And what we did was add the consensus that we found in the 2017 DIR comments, many of which, many of which came from Fortuna. And that's why we're here tonight. The environmental organizations had a consensus that 10,000 feet was enough. They had a consensus on one person, one permit, one parcel, one permit. We didn't invent this stuff. We took it from that and it's public record. You can, you can check it out. It's fairly easy. You scroll down to the bottom of the page and it's, it's all there. This, the intention is to stop the next green rush. The ordinance that the growers and the county got together and wrote, wrote in 2017 is not a terrible ordinance at all. But what we do is give it some teeth. It's not ministerial inspections. And Mr. Ford told us in this last year, he actually had boots on the ground for all, for one half and did a flyover for the other half. And his intention for this year in '24 is to do the opposite. The ones that were flown over, he would inspect boots on the ground. So it's, it's not going to hurt the people that are now in business. And I agree with them. Many of them are, are good farmers. They actually don't get rid of their soil at the end of the year. They build on it. And they have water catchment, but it doesn't do anything to them except does not allow to expand over 10,000 square feet. And we feel, and many of the agencies felt, natural resource agencies and environmental groups felt that 10,000 square feet, basically quarter acre, is appropriate for the type of ecosystem we have. It's not all Ferndale with a high water table. We have a lot of fragile soils up in the hills and that was, was the consensus. So we didn't dream this up. We just went back, public participation's a good thing, except there's a real history of it being done and then ignoring what people said. And there, look at it for yourself. There was a real consensus on size and number. Also, when the initiative was filed, we couldn't get a real count of how many farms there were. Planning said they weren't sure. We got different numbers. So we figured it around 10,000, around 10, probably 10,000, I mean, 1,000 or 1,200. If it's dropped down to 750, that means like liquor licenses, we'll be able to have that many more permits issued. And I do thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Back to council. Go ahead.
Today and yesterday, as I was reading through the information that came with the attachments and all, I read in a couple, three different places talking about interpretation and the county will need to interpret. And I heard you bring that up also about interpretation. And I've spent a lifetime, it seems like, working with grant agreements, ordinances, insurance policies and exclusions and inclusions and stuff that they specifically say they won't cover and will cover. And there's no ambiguousness. And today, we can see in state government and federal government where as the administration changes, the interpretation and definition of words change. And so if there's ambiguousness in something such as this ordinance or a state law or a federal law, it brings out fear. People are, you know, because it'll eventually be used against you at some point, it seems like. People can be made felons overnight. A business can be shut down just by changing a comma. So when there's any ambiguousness in an ordinance such as this, it's going to make people automatically afraid. And I think that's where a big problem lies, is that words have meaning and if the meaning is not understood and the intent is not understood, it's not going to be supported. And that's what's happening here, I think. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments? Did you have? No?
Well, I'll just say that I actually have gone to a few farms. I'm pretty, I was pretty naive on, on cannabis until we started looking at our ordinance. And I've visited a couple of farms. I had no idea there were so many different types of plants. And went to a few dispensaries and truly amazed at how these businesses are so professional. So I was kind of impressed with all of that. That doesn't have a lot to do with this ordinance, but I just thought I'd throw that in there. So we don't have, I mean, we do have a meeting set for two weeks, you know, to come back if you want to. We, we were not, not in a position to make a recommendation. So this was just a, a informational thing today. So I want to thank everybody for coming and sharing your stories. It's very much appreciated. Thank you. So we'll be moving on to our next, or actually to our business. Actually, oral comments from the public on... We, no, we haven't done that yet. On items that are not on the agenda. We'll give you just a few minutes. Which we're losing most of our public, so. Okay, any public comment from, any oral publics from the, oral comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close that. We'll move to consent calendar. We have city council minutes, city council minutes, report of dispersments, approval of a contract with Mercer Frasier Company for minor street paving, maintenance and repair project, and council review and approval of commissions and committees. Oh. And approval of selection of the Parks and Recreation Director. Anybody want to pull any of them?
F, please.
Okay. Any others? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Just a comment that, boy, I'm, I'm really happy that we are going to have Heather Stevens onboard. I know that we had a lot of really excellent applicants for this position and it was a difficult choice to make with regard to all of that, the applicants that, that were, that did apply. She's got a huge amount of experience and education. She has the recreation aspect down and she also has budgeting and administrative experience aspects that we're really looking for. So I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure that the rest of the council joins me in saying that we're very glad and happy that she's going to be coming onboard. With that, I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Any oral, or any pub, or comments from the public on the consent calendar? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to city business. Our first item is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024-767 EV charging station.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So I provided a comprehensive summary at the last city council meeting and I'll just give a few items of information here, but this is to conduct the second reading and the, and adopt ordinance 2024-767. This is a result in 2015, the state of California adopted Assembly Bill 1236, which required local jurisdictions with a population of less than 200,000 residents to adopt an ordinance to create an expedited streamlined permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations. The ordinance also requires that each jurisdiction adopt a checklist of requirements which have completed. An application for an electric vehicle charging station would be approved in expedited manner and also that the checklist contain objective requirements for the installation and a process for electronic permit submittal for those. So the city has complied with those requirements with this ordinance. We have already implemented the online permitting portal that will be able to accept that. So that's another step forward. We did not receive any changes from the council or any input from the public since the last reading. So the recommendation is that the council proceed with the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Any questions from council?
Open public comment. Anybody in the public have a comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to hold second reading and adopt ordinance 2024-767. Read by title only.
I'll second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ordinance 2024-767, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, adding chapter 15.65 to article 15 of the Fortuna municipal code to provide procedures for expediting permitting processes for electric vehicle charging systems and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is a second reading of adoption and adoption of ordinance 2024-768, solar streamline.
Again, very similar. This is the second reading of the ordinance, which we also, we conducted the first reading at the last city council meeting. There was no comments or no changes since that last reading. Essentially, this provides an expedited manner for solar permits. We've already been implementing this at the city level. This is really just the ordinance to follow. We're using the solar app where applicants can submit all their information online, get a preapproval. It gets back checked by our, our building department to make sure that all the application material is accurate. And then those permits go through very quickly, again, using our online permit portal. This is something that we already have and is up and running. So this, this ordinance and as well as the last one, they make a lot of sense. It makes routine projects for solar and electric vehicle charging stations much easier and quicker for folks to complete. So I'm pleased to be able to give the recommendation to conduct the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody in the public have a comment on this item? Seeing none, any questions from council? Anything? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold the second reading and adopt ordinance 2024-768 and read by title only.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ordinance 2024-768, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, adding chapter 15.67 to article 15 of the Fortuna municipal code to provide for expediting permitting processing for small residential rooftop solar systems and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So there's just a few items. I'd like to review our upcoming meeting schedule and then some changes. Our next city council meeting will be on February 20th at 6:00 PM. Our next planning commission normally would be held on February 13th at 6:00 PM. However, that meeting has been canceled. So our next meeting will be on February 27th. Our next Measure E meeting date is March 19th at 5:30 PM, the regular meeting time. And our upcoming community, upcoming Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on February 7th at 2:30 PM, all at City Hall. And our next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting will be on February 27th at 8:30 AM. So just a few things that I wanted to report. One of those is that I'll be attending the Cal City, Cal City Managers Conference this week, Wednesday through Friday. So I'll be out of the office and I believe Aaron will be our acting city manager. I hadn't asked him yet, but I know that Aaron's around and is always up for the task. Another, another item that I would like to report is our, we were able to recover some of the funds that we spent at 2386 Acacia. Aaron just had checked with the county. We put about $25,000 into abatement and demolition and cleanup at that site. It was quite an extensive site and you never really know if you're going to see the money back, but we got the $25,000 back plus about $15,000 in penalties. So we saw $40,000 coming back from the county. Thank you to the county for following through and getting that property sold and getting some of the money back in our general fund. I will say that I got an update from Brendan Byrd, our Public Works Director today. He said that, so the PGE has been stalled at the pod. I know last time I was there, they're working on flooring. They put in the desks and the casework and they're putting in the appliance... in the appliances. So the lights are on. They have, they have power at the building right now. So it's really exciting. It's starting to look like a warm facility that can be occupied. We're waiting for good weather to do some of the site work and get the grading and paving done. But it's going to happen really quickly. And they're moving along at a pretty good clip. So we anticipate, once we get a little bit further, to be able to start showing the council and the public that when we get a little closer to construction. Our task now will be, how do we make sure that we're getting everything done? There's a lot of loose ends when it comes down to communications, some of the 911 servers. Some of those take really precise coordinations. And one of the bigger tasks right now is, it might be the critical path, is how do we get our phone system transferred over there? Because we have more than one vendor that are involved with that. And so Sienna and I and others are jockeying that. But you wouldn't believe how tricky it is to take phone lines here, get all those numbers transferred over, get the software to support them, get the hardware. And I mean, there's just a number of conversations. So it's, it's a tricky thing. And I will say that Sherry and I are working on the layout for the, you know, for the reuse of the police facility at City Hall. And we're thinking a lot about that and how we can best use that space. And some of the things we're thinking about is, you know, people are still going to show up. So we should probably have a lot, you know, a police presence there. And for how long? And so we're, we're going to be talking about that at our department, department head meeting tomorrow and thinking about that reuse because it's getting close now. Because that, the police facility is on track to be done in April-ish.
No longer March.
We won't put a hard date. So again, Brendan's been putting a lot of work into that coordination. So he'll, probably won't know what to do with himself when that project's done. We'll have to start another one. So, so that's all I have for my report.
Thank you.
Real quick, do we have a budget here coming up?
Aaron, our next, I don't think we have a workshop scheduled at that point. So one of the things that we're going to be doing is setting up a workshop for revenue generation. So we pulled the council for a date and we're not exactly, so we'll, I'll confirm that date. But I don't have it scheduled at this point. And Aaron, do you, do we have a date? I don't think, yeah, I don't think we have a budget workshop scheduled at this point. But Aaron just did the mid-year. We'll be bringing back the budget down the road. The last we just had was a mid-year budget review.
Okay, eliminate the 13th. No budget meeting.
That, that's a placeholder for potential revenue generation. So we haven't solidified that yet. We may request that the council have that meeting. And so please keep that time blocked out.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any future agenda, agenda items? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you. I had a prior obligation on the last redact meeting. So Mr. Losi went for me. So he can report on that. I welcome in our city workers, the Parks and Rec and Street Department. They keeping everything flowing right way, right direction, making sure all this water is going where it's supposed to go. And I saw the Parks Department out there the other day when we got one nice sunny day out there mowing the median. So it's impressive to see them try to whip it all out because I can't get to my yard. So I appreciate them trying to get to our cities and make it look good. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Losi?
Thank you. Yes, I attended a regular LAFCO meeting on January 17th. Michelle Bushnell, our second district supervisor, was reappointed as the chair. And we received a mid-year budget report, which appears that the finances are in order. And we approved a revised municipal service review and sphere of influence update for the Willow Creek Community Services District. And as well as ongoing MSRs and spheres for OREC, Community Services District in the City of Fortuna, which will be completed in this next year. The LAFCO web-based mapping program is continuing. If you've never looked at the Humboldt County GIS mapping platform, it's really amazing. You can go online at Humboldt GIS platform. And it shows parcels throughout the county. There are overlays that you can bring up. And this is, if you take a look at it, this is going to be pretty much what LAFCO's GIS platform will be with overlays for annexations, past annexations and spheres of influence and all of those kinds of things. So it's, it's a pretty exciting development and program that we're, we're putting on. And like Kyle said, on January 22nd, I attended a Redwood Region Economic Development Meeting for him. Scott Dare presented an offshore wind industry report and update. We did, it was the same day that the federal government announced a $426 million grant to the Humboldt Bay Harbor District for the offshore wind-heavy lift marine terminal, which is a dock on the Salaman Peninsula. So that was exciting news. And then we had the election of officers for redact. And because Kyle wasn't there, I nominated him for president, chair. Just, no, no. I didn't do that. Natalie Arroyo was elected to chair. So, and that was pretty much it.
Thank you.
Glad to help, Kyle.
Councilmember Mobley?
Thank you. I've had a couple of RCEA meetings the last couple of weeks, but nothing that I can report on till that.
Okay, Mayor Protam Johnson?
Well, there's been a few things happening. Last, earlier, no, last part of January, I ended up attending a online version of a TCPW, Transportation, Communication and Public Works Policy Committee with Cal Cities. And a lot of stuff in the general briefing they brought up was that February 16th, everybody hold your wallets because that's the day that bills start hitting the legislature. And by the end of February, first part of March, they start moving into their committees. So that's when bills hit, February 16th. The buzzword this year in the budget is reduce, borrow, delay and defer. And amazingly, the deepest cuts in the budget are to the climate change programs and housing, which last year, the biggest and most important things were climate change and housing. So, and it's another interesting thing is that the Legislative Analyst Office noted that while the governor cited a $38 billion deficit, the Legislative Analyst Office says that he worked on and solved a $58 billion problem. So I don't know which one was which, but that's what came out of the meeting. Then we got into the, some of the goals for the year. And the biggest things were, and I'm sure there's the same thing in CSAC, especially in Public Works, is local control and system preservation are the two biggest things. Because maintenance is taking a backseat to a lot of things. And we need to preserve our existing Public Works infrastructure. And local control is necessary because we don't have the same issues as the Los Angeles basin. We know what we need here. Our roads are not the same as the ones down south. And we don't have the same problems. So we have different things that we need to maintain and repair. Looking through some of my other notes, the legislative update talked about autonomous vehicles. I don't know if anybody out here, but I've never seen an autonomous vehicle in Humboldt County. But some of the things that was interesting was that it would require that law enforcement must have a way to disable the vehicle. Because they decide they're autonomous. They can do what they want. And they would require, this bill would require a local ordinance to operate in that, in their district, in our city or in the county. So those are, those are things that sounds different, but it's real. And our next meeting is in March in beautiful downtown Burbank. So I will not be attending that meeting. There is no easy, I've flown to LA and back in one day before, but you can't do it anymore, not make a meeting. So, and that's, I did also attend a call regarding the storm and the state's preparations. I think I heard your name mentioned in that call. And there, I think that the state has the best intentions and in preparation. Our local power companies, PG&E has pre-staged things. I know on Last Chance Grade, their contractor, there's a already in place, a emergency repair contract. And there is equipment pre-staged up there. And I think things have worked pretty well, actually, for the amount of rain we've had. Yes, there's been some highways closed, but they've been reopened. We haven't had any major infrastructure failures. Things are still moving. So that's good. And I have another HCOG meeting next week on the 15th, and I'll report about that when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Michelle, as he was saying, for keeping us informed on all of the road closures and flooding and all of that kind of stuff. So thank you Supervisor Bushnell. I just got a text from chief that said to tell everybody hello.
Is he lurking?
He must be. I just got it. So Providence Redwood Memorial has announced that they'll be closing the outpatient lab service, March 18th, 2024. So Supervisor Bushnell and I are hosting a meeting at the new Fortuna Senior Center on Roneville Road, 3811 Roneville Road. And we're working on brochures to get out. And this is to, we have two of the higher ups from Providence coming to explain what, how they're going to take care of this. What, you know, where our, where our citizens are going to be able to get blood draws and lab work. So, and any questions that, that want to be answered. So that's going to be Thursday, February 22nd at 9:30. And our senior bus will be providing free rides for anybody who needs a ride. So, and that would be to call down to the senior bus and they can arrange that. And we'll be getting more information about that out. And then I attended the fire department dinner. And that was, that was very nice. Our ex-fireman, is that what you would call you? Or exempt now, exempt fireman. So thank you for all your years as a fireman. And I went to the Friends of the Library along with Merritt Luncheon. And I learned a lot of things that the library does that I never knew. They actually do a whole lot of stuff there. So it was a very interesting meeting and a lot of fun. And then I also attended the canine fundraiser down at the Veterans Building. Michelle and I were out there, you know, flagging down the cars, serving the dinners. And so that was fun. And they, they had a good fundraiser. They make an excellent lasagna dinner. And one of our canines is completely funded by donations. So we have these fundraisers every so often. And it was a big success. And that's all I have on my report.
Can I have a minute?
You already had yours.
I know. I'm not doing a report, though.
Okay.
There is something coming up. And I know the Supervisor Bushnell's aware of it also because it affects her more so than it does us in Humboldt, I mean, in Fortuna. But AT&amp;T is applied to withdraw from both its service in the rural areas and its service of last resort. So there could be people with no means of communication. And I know that there are meetings coming up in March, and I believe, in two weeks. Is it in March or is it in end of February?
Sorry.
So I don't know if we will have a meeting before that, that we can write a letter and have it put into the Public Utilities Commission. But that's something that I forgot when we talked about future agenda items.
Mayor, you may want to ask Supervisor Bushnell. I know she had some information she wanted to share.
I was actually just going to ask her if she wanted to come.
Thank you. I missed the non-agenda public comment. But AT&amp;T, so they are applying to the CPUC to withdraw out of Humboldt County in those very critical rural areas. They will have public hearings and address the CPUC and ask for permission to withdraw and be the service of last resort. I will be attending those, one of those meetings in New Kaya to speak for Humboldt County. And we'll email you all that information. You can attend by noon and make public comment, or you can write a letter. I encourage you as council members that it is so important. Carlotta has no service. When you pass Beth's Dairy, you're done. You, you don't have cell service. And so those residents out there that are your residents that come in, I mean, they're un, they come into Fortuna, they will not have phone service if AT&amp;T leaves. And it's so critical. Also, your fire departments are very dependent on those people using their landlines to call for a medical emergency or fires. So it is very serious. And it's very serious for Humboldt County. And thank you for giving me that opportunity.
And if, Michelle, if you can get me that information and the deadline for getting a letter, then I can put it on our council agenda for consideration.
Yes, I thank you for me to say that.
Thank you. Thank you for looking out for us. Now, we have two closed session items. Conference with real property negotiator. Section, I can't see this, 54956.8 of the Government Code, vacant land at 624 Main Street, Fortuna. Negotiating party, city manager Merritt Perry. And for the City of Fortuna and Ray Chisholm as negotiating party under negotiation price and terms of payment. And the next one is conference with labor negotiator, city negotiator, city manager, Merritt Perry, employees organization, Fortuna Police Employees Association, Fortuna Employees Association and Unrepresented Management Group in accordance with section 54957.6 of the Government Code. So do we have, oh, do we have any public comment on either of these items?
I would like some feedback.
Sure. Close public comment? Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.